Good afternoon everybody, respected director Dr. Zinno Harisastri, Director of CSIR NIST, all participants. Today we have one special session on art, art under CSIR SRTP 2020 program. Today we have Mr. Porixit Borua, founder, chairman of Vision Art Awesome. So he will deliver a lecture on art and its role in our life. So I welcome you all to this special session of art. Just before going to this lecture, I want to introduce Mr. Porixit Gogoi, Porixit Borua to all of you. Mr. Porixit Borua is a founder and chairman of Vision Art Awesome, Centre for Visual and Performing Arts, Jorhat Assam since 2018. He has served as TGT in Delhi Public School, Duliyajan Debru Gaur Assam from 2000 to 2018. And he is the illustrator in Assami Children's Magazine, Musak. He has done Bachelor of Fine Arts in Painting in 1997 from MS University, Baruda, Gujarat and Master of Fine Arts in Graphics, Printmaking in 1999 from MS University, Baruda. So Mr. Porixit Borua has been awarded with National Award by All India Fine Arts and Craft Society, New Delhi in 2000 and Commendation Award in Painting by South Central Zone Cultural Centre, Nagpur in 1997. He has also received National Scholarship for the year of 2001 to 2003 by Ministry of Human Resource and Development, Gov. of India. With this, I welcome today's speaker, our guest, Porixit Borua, to deliver his talk on art and its role in our life. Over to Mr. Porixit Borua.
Hello.
Yes sir, you are audible.
Hello everybody.
Share your slides if you want to.
Okay definitely. Hello everybody, I am Porixit Borua, I am a visual artist. I do painting and printmaking. Today I am going to talk on art and its role in our life. Almost all of we know what is called art. Whatever we do in our day-to-day life using our skill and creativity is art. What is skill? Skill is related with our physical parts of our body. For example, to do one painting, we have to use our hand. That way for dancing, we have to use our entire parts of our body. That way for singing, we have to use our mouth. Skill is very important for art. If we practice a lot, we can develop our skill. But skill is not enough. A skillful person is not considered as an artist unless he uses his creativity. Creativity is related with our mind, with our brain. We can develop our creativity also. For that, we have to earn more knowledge. Whatever we do in our day-to-day life using skill and creativity both, we can call art. So that way all of we are artists. Who was the first artist? Early man was the first artist. Early man, he made beautiful drawings, beautiful paintings inside the cave on the wall. After coming from hunting, surrounding the fire, he used to dance, even he used to sing also. It is very difficult to imagine that before the discovery of language, early men used to sing. Actually, art, it comes out from our soul. That's why the great artist Pablo Picasso was telling that every child is an artist. The problem is how to remain an artist once he grows up. In our fast, busy life, we are losing our artistic nature of our mind. Here in this presentation, I want to tell you briefly about how art is changing from prehistoric art to modern, again from modern art to post-modern art. Already I told you that early men did beautiful drawings inside the cave on the wall. Now, I am showing you one picture of new stone as. This is very beautifully done by early men. We can see the skill and creativity of that particular time. Afterwards, men became more civilized and they started their colonies. Through all the civilizations like industrial civilization, Mesopotamia civilization, Chinese civilization, Egyptian civilization, Maya civilization etc., artists earned more skill and knowledge. I am showing you another one sculpture of stone as. This is mother bodies. This picture is from Mesopotamia, nicely carved sculpture, mural, relief work. Another one sculpture from Mesopotamia civilization. Here slowly and slowly, we can see artist is earning more skill. But then also we find some kind of rigidity here. This site is from industrially. We can see how beautifully the city was designed. It was very planned. Not only this, we can find beautiful sculptures, seals, toys and many other things from industrial civilization. Again, this one is from Egyptian civilization. Behind we can see the pyramid and in the middle ground, we can see beautiful sculpture, beautifully carved but still little bit rigidity is there. Another one picture, again from Egyptian civilization, beautifully carved. These paintings are from Egyptian civilization. All the torches of the figures are from front and even eyes are from front. The other parts of the body is from side, from four five. After all these ancient civilizations, we find Greek and Roman civilization. In Greece, we find Greek civilization and in Rome, we find Roman civilization. Both Greek and Roman civilization are called classical period. Not only in art, there was development in science, in literature, in sports, in business, everywhere. At the very beginning, Greek civilization was more developed comparatively Roman civilization. Now if we observe, we can see the amount of skill artists use in this sculpture. So nicely carved both sculptures. Another two figure, one is female figure, other one discus tour. Both the figures are carved so nicely that we can see muscles, bones and all minor details. In the other picture, we can see all draperies of the dress also. These paintings are from Greek civilization on pot. Now if we compare these paintings with Egyptian civilization, we find here artist is earning more skill. This site is from Roman civilization. Initially Greek civilization was very developed. Slowly and slowly, rich people and king could not afford, they could not give commission to all the experts like artists, writers, scientists, sports person and all. That's why these all the experts, they went to Rome. As soon as Roman civilization, they got this new expert, Roman civilization became more developed. I am going to show you another one slide. Here we can see the anatomy of figures so nicely carved and we can see the movement of all the figures also. If we observe, we can see the expression of all the figures. Comparatively, Greek civilization, here we find more developed. While in western countries, all these art practices were going on even in India. In every corner of India, artists, they were practicing their own works. That's why we find miniature paintings, cave paintings, rock architecture, temple architecture and many more. This is from Ajanta, I am going to show you more from Ajanta. Here artist is carving big rock and giving the structure of this building or temple. Now another one from Gandhara art from India. Now if we compare this sculpture with Roman sculpture, we can see that even in India, artists were very skillful. Here artist is showing all minor details. Even is showing draperies of the dress, expression, everything. Now another one, rock architecture of Ilurakee, Oylasna Temple. Again here, artist is carving big rock and giving this kind of structure with many beautiful sculptures. This rock architecture is from Khadurabhuk. The entire temple is carved so minutely with many human figures. From here, we can say that in India also artists were very skillful. Now I am coming back to western art. After Greek and Roman civilization, after that ancient classical period, no doubt there was development of skill but comparatively it slowed down. People those who used to study ancient Greek and Roman civilization, they felt that as if the ancient classical period is coming again because they observed that again there all round development is going on. In sports, they developed, in literature, they started developing, in music, in everywhere they. That's why they told Rhenisha, the meaning of Rhenisha is rebirth. Rebirth of what? Rebirth of ancient classical period. Here in this painting, we can see the skill of artist. Even we can see the creativity also, so nicely composed. We can see the perspective view of the site. After Rhenisha, we find another one period, mannerism. Again, we can see the development of skill. This is Baruk period. I am showing you two pictures here. First one sculpture with two human figures, so nicely carved. We can see the movement, we can see all the minor details. It is very difficult to identify whether sculpture or real human figure. Only from the color of the stone, we can identify. Second one, this portrait is, it is looking like real photographs, not painting. This way, artists were developing their skill and in new classical period, artists went to the extreme point of the development. They developed their highest skill, we can say. Though pictures are looking very real, but here something is not there, that is natural light. Most of the artists of Rhenisha, Baruk period, they had very nice facility of work, a studio because they were quite rich. They were getting commission from king and other rich people. That's why staying inside the studio, they used to draw and they use melodramatic like there. We do not find natural light there. While classical period was going on that time, another one art period was going on simultaneously, that is romantic art. This is by John Constable, this is one romantic painting. These two are by artist Turner, he is showing natural disaster. Again, these two paintings are romantic painting. This one by Goya. Here he is showing war scene, many scale killing man, he is showing the brutality of human being. He did many classical paintings, few of his paintings are romantic. This one is also romantic painting. Now, many of you may think, how come these are romantic painting? We cannot see romance here. Actually, from wherever we get sublime feeling, that is romantic. Then what is sublime feeling? I am giving you few examples. Suppose you are going to a hill station. In the early morning, you are going to a sunrise point to see sunrise. You are waiting for the sun. The entire sky is looking very beautiful, the clouds are becoming beautiful. You can see beautiful colors in the sky and you can see thin line of the sun. Slowly and slowly, it is becoming big. You are waiting for the complete sun and after seeing the complete sun, you are expressing, wow, so beautiful, I have not seen this kind of sunrise before. It means you are comparing with your past experience as if this is something more. This kind of feeling is sublime. Suppose one of your friend told you very funny joke, you are laughing and laughing, holding your stomach, you are laughing, your stomach is painy, then also you can't stop. Somehow you stop and you are telling, wow, so funny joke, I have not heard this kind of joke before. Whatever feeling, whatever feeling we get, if we compare with our past, if we find that this is something more, that is sublime. And from wherever we get sublime feeling, that is romantic. After romantic art, we find realism till romantic art. Artists did not use natural light because they used to do their painting inside their studio. They use spotlight. That's why we find the main pictures still live or the human figure is to be bright, background is to be dark, but here in this painting, we find natural light. While all these art practices were going on in West, in India also, artists were practicing their art. Artists were making miniature paintings, cave paintings. Even we find many folk paintings. This one is by Raja Robi Verma. He is making one group of portresia galaxy of musician. We can see the classical quality of the waste. Here we can see the melodramatic life. Another one, Radha and Krishna by Vishwanath Mahadev Vishwanath Durandar. Again, we can see the classical quality here. Already I told you that at the very beginning, artists had comparatively less skill. If we say that at the very beginning, artists had zero skill and slowly and slowly, artists developed his skill through all the civilizations. In Greek and Roman civilization, we find more development of skill. They developed very fast. Then after this ancient classical period, Roman and Greek civilization, it slowed down. Again from Rhenisha to new classical, romantic and realism, we find maximum growth of skill. Then afterwards, again it slowed down. By the time camera obscura was discovered and many artists, they felt that unnecessarily they are wasting their time. Better we can click on photographs. That's why few artists like Pisharu, Mele, Karo, they went to one village called Barbizon. It is in France. They went outside the studio, they started their painting in open air. As soon as they started their painting in open air, they started using day-to-day scene of common people. In their painting, we find natural light and since they were doing very fast, they used rough brushstrokes. So these are the major differences we can see in their artwork. Barbiza School of Art was the turning point towards modern art. Many artists, they joined with Barbiza School of Art and the entire group became very big. They exhibited their artwork in Paris for the first time. Money. He exhibited his art. Title of his artwork was Impression Sunrise. Many viewers, many art lovers, official artists, official architects, they went to see the exhibition. They did not like this kind of art, no doubt many other art lovers, they like this new art. As soon as those official artists and architect saw this painting, Impression Sunrise, they got their chance. They were just joking and mocking and they were telling, oh, impressionist artist. Even in newspaper and magazine, they wrote article mentioning the term impressionist or impressionism for several times. Without any reason, only for this reason, the entire group became popular as impressionist artist. And we find one big group, impressionism, that is the first group of modern art. Afterwards, many impressionist artists, they brought more changes like Hancock, Gogal, Seja, Diga, Metis, many of them, they brought more changes. They changed their brushstrokes, colors and many more. That's why we find another one group, that is post-impressionist artist group. While in western countries, all these art movements were going on. In, again in India, art practice were going on. We find Bengal School of Art, we find many other folk art. This is by Omrita Sargil, young girl's mother, her mother is from Hungary and father was Punjabi. She, she went to Paris to learn art and she learned all post-impressionist styles and then she came to India and she practiced here. Again, I am coming back to West, criticism, another one group, hob means while in email. Here artists used bright colors and this group was for very small, short duration, only for seven years, even group was also very small. Another one big group, expressionism or expressionist artist group. It was very big and many artists, they were doing their painting in and they brought many changes also. This one Edward Moon's painting, the scream. If we see this painting, we can get the feeling of the sound. Now I am going to talk about cubism. Pablo Picasso and William Burke, both of them, they started this new style of art using geometrical shapes. Afterwards, many other artists, they joined with them and they form one very big group. Again, cubism is divided into many like analytical cubism, synthetic cubism, aphorism, pucerism etc. Another one art movement, Dada art movement, artists started their artwork in a different way. Whatever they like to do, they started to do. One of them, Salvador Dali, he drew Manalisa and then he drew Mostec. Drew Mustang and one small beard. In the other picture, we can see blank canvas, black canvas. This way, artists, they started their artwork and common people, they were telling that. These artists are just destroying their artworks. But Dada artists were telling that destruction is also construction. To construct something, definitely we have to destroy something. Again, this is from Dada Art Movement. Now I am going to talk about Surrealist art, Surrealism, surreal means strange or dream kind of images. Many artists, they use strange or dream kind of images in their painting or in their sculptures. We can see flying images, men with animal head. Another one, this is by Salvador Dali. Beautiful but strange background is there, this ones, this reflection is looking like elephants. So this way, using strange and dream kind of images, artists made so many beautiful pictures. Most of we used to talk about abstract, abstract art, many of we, we do not know what is actually abstract. In abstract painting, we do not see any known image, no human figure, no animal figure, nothing. Here artists use only colors, textures. Brushstrokes. Different, different, different designs and with the help of all this. They try to make their artwork very interesting and if we see, we can get some kind of feeling definitely. Again, another one abstract art, pop art, many artists, they started their painting. And sculpture using popular images of that time. Now I am coming to this art, this is conceptual art. While Dada Art Movement was going on in one exhibition, Dada Exhibition. One Dada artist, Marcel Dussem, he exhibited this sculpture, ready-made sculpture. One ceramics, urinal pot. Like other artists, he kept one title also that is fountain. If we read the name or hear the name and we see the sculpture. We can connect with something, the process of urination. It means here artist is giving some other meaning, one meaning is behind it and from here conceptual art started. Nowadays, almost most of the artists, they use some kind of concept in their artwork. No doubt, now it is becoming completely different, art is changing, it is changing very fast. This is about modern art. Earlier, men had very less information, our life was very slow. It was very difficult to go to America. If we want to send one letter to England, it was very difficult, it took time, many months. If we want to read one book of Oxford University, it was not possible at that time. But nowadays, due to modern technology, due to science. We can easily read book from all the places. With the help of internet, with the help of our smartphone, we can read, we can send letter within few seconds. Even we can go to America within one or two days. Though the art is so big, this modern technology is making our art very small, that is globalization. Since now we have lots of information, we have many options in front of us. So we can select, we do not follow any group, we can create our own language of art. Nowadays artists, they are trying to make beautiful artworks. They are not following anybody, they are trying to develop their own individual language. Always they are trying to make their artwork different from others. And that is postmodern art, postmodernism, it does not have any definite term. No boundaries, no absolute truth, it is a journey from groupism to individualism. Nowadays. Artists, they are making many different kind of artworks, using different, different materials. This one is one installation art. Artist is using ready-made. Objects and with that he is physically making many other things also and giving some concepts. Another one installation art, conceptual, it's very conceptual. One more installation art. It looks as if light is coming from top. Many times artists used to make their artwork using scrap materials. Or materials whatever they get easily in their home, that is brick walls. Nowadays, most of we, we do conceptual art. And metaphor is taking an important role in conceptual art. Artists can give double meaning, multi-meaning and many times allegorical meaning also to make their artwork more interesting. Due to modern technology, nowadays artists. They use machines, they use many other things in their artworks. That's why we find video art, junk art, we find minimalism, maximalism, new classical art. New romantic art, new metaphysical art, transavantgarde movement. That way so many art movements are going on, but no one is trying to follow any group. They are always trying to become individual. This is about art. It is very difficult to include all the things in my presentation. Now again, I am coming back to art and its role in our life. Art is playing a major role in every work of our life. Without art, our life will be very mechanical. Traditionally, art and science have been treated as two separate disciplines. But if we study both the subjects together, then we shall find. That art and science impact on each other. Scientists invent and discover new things, new machines, new products. For the betterment of human being. For this invention and discovery first, we have to visually imagine. And physically we have to work using our scientific knowledge. A great deal of creativity is required to make scientific breakthroughs. Without artistic imagination and creativity, new invention cannot be possible. Here, I want to give the example of Leonardo da Vinci, the great artist. Leonardo da Vinci was a painter. Sculptor, architect, inventor, military engineer and draftsman. This is Manalisa done by Leonardo da Vinci, this is very famous, all of we know about it. Here Leonardo da Vinci, he is drawing, scientific drawing, it's very interesting. Again, in these two paintings, Leonardo da Vinci, he is drawing parts of machines. And some other gadgets. Using his strong imagination power, Leonardo da Vinci made many designs of variety of machines. All his inventions may not work perfectly in his time. But those designs and models became a milestone of scientific invention. Today, all the products and machines we use are given by scientists or science. Are always designed by artists. For example, if we talk about car, the machinery part of the car is definitely made by scientist. But the outer look, the design is always made by artist. That way, we can talk about chair, the main purpose of the chair is to sit. But in our home and in our office space. In restaurant, we find varieties of design, who made all this design, artists. Again, we can see many other products, I am showing you here, all are made by scientists. But designed by artists. Scientists are always trying to make our life more comfortable and good. They are inventing many things, many times. If we use in a negative way, this product may harm us. But artists are making our life very happy and peaceful. And mental happiness brings good health. Here I want to tell how art gives us healthy life. According to Professor Samir Zeki, a neurobiologist at the University College of London. When we enjoy great artwork, our brain releases dopamine. A feel-good chemical. It's the same when we fall in love or romantically for someone. All kinds of art forms can be used as healing and therapy also. Art making can be used for our personal growth, self-expressing, transformation and wellness. Art therapy has grown since the nineteen hundred and seventies. And now it is a recognized form of treatment in the field of health and medicine. Surrounding ourselves with things we love bring mental happiness, our dress in.
Uh, due to some technical issues, they have lost connection with the speaker, yeah, he is back.
Uh, can you see me?
Yes, yes, you are, you are audible and you are seen, please continue. Yes, you can continue, yeah.
Okay. I am sorry for this, again I am coming back, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
So our mental happiness is very important for us, it brings always good health. For our personal happiness, we should know our personal aesthetics and do activity what we love more. In our, in our professional life, this mental happiness helps us to give quality work. Art is essential for every discipline of education also. It helps us to make diagrams, charts, models, etc. Illustration can teach more easily than text of the book. Activity-based education encourages students to actively participate in their own learning experience. And it stops the habit of cramming. Education through art is very useful for pre-primary and primary schools. Art helps children to develop their motor skills, language skills, social skills. Decision-making, risk-taking and inventiveness. Art education connects students with their own culture and also with the wider world. Art is taking an, art is taking a major role in the business world also. Advertising is all around us. We see it every day in the form of advertisement, brochures, logos, product packaging. Billboards, book covers and other similar artwork. Who make these designs, commercial artists, design all this type of advertising. Commercial artists are taking an important role to promote these products in the market. Because of commercial art, industries or companies are able to expand their market. And earn more money. Fundamentally, there is difference between art and entertainment, but. In the postmodern time, we do not find any sharp demarcation between art and entertainment. Today, art is taking an important role even in entertainment world also. And we cannot leave this entertainment world. After coming from our job, from our working place, after having lots of stress and anxiety. We want to make ourselves fresh. That's why most of we, we see either dance program or music program or any serial or movie. Entertainment can take us to a different world and can make us more relaxed. Entertainment gives us a predictable pleasure, but art leads to transformation. It evokes us rather than just satisfying a craving. Almost all of us, we know that history is very important for development. Because based on that, we can develop more. History gives us lots of information about science, commerce. Society, politics, culture of the past. History teaches us many things to design our present and future life. But how to know history, to know history, many times we have to study paintings, sculptures. Porteries, murals, architectures of the particular period. All kinds of art forms of the past provide us better clarity about science. And socio-political environment. About geography and culture of the past. If we see this picture, here we can see. see one terracotta toy, first one. And from this toy we can able to say about the social structure of the time. Another one, one seal. This kind of many seals were found in Harakpa and Mahendra civilization. Similar kind of seals were found in Mesopotamian civilization also. And from there we can say that during that time they had trade among both the civilizations. All kinds kinds of art forms are the glitters of our culture. They make our culture rich and colorful. Art and rich culture are the source of attraction for tourists. So using these resources tourism industry can be developed for the economic growth of our country. Art can communicate with each and every people of the society and with the greater community of the world. Art brings proper unity and harmony to the society. We can say that art is the legacy of the culture of a particular society. Art brings peace and stability to the society for all kinds of growth. Here I am showing you one miniature painting from Orissa Potocicra. Another one Kalomkari painting, again folk art. These two are, one is, first one is modhubani and second one is worldly painting. Again folk art, worldly painting, tribal art. This way all different kind of art forms, paintings, sculpture, dance, music, all are making our culture. Friends, all of us want to go to the topmost position of our professional life. Today in every workplace we are having lots of stresses and anxiety. In this busy, mechanical and monotonous life we feel very unhappy. And depressed also. Because of this we face health issues like hypertension, high blood pressure, high blood sugar etcetera. So we cannot give our quality work and cannot get success. That's why we should find our personal interest and know our personal aesthetics and do activity what we love more. Practicing art brings mental happiness and good health. It increases our capabilities of quality work. Art gives us mental boost in our life and increase our creativity and imagination power and help us in problem solving. So friends, in the journey of our life we should always carry art to become a successful person. Thank you.
Uh thank you sir. You have very nicely explained uh how art affect in our life or what is the role of art uh in our life. So I like this your comment. Mind is responsible for quality of our work. It is very true. So I also faith on it. So sir, thank you. Now we are going to start our question-answer session. Uh we have received lot of questions from our participants. Uh we have selected five out of those questions. So I will read it here and you please answer it sir.
Okay, definitely I shall try ma'am.
Okay. Uh first question, uh it is from Durgas Burma. Uh what is main factor for the development of our skill?
Actually we have to practice. Without practice we cannot develop. So whatever we want to do, it may be any kind of art form, we have to practice a lot. Without practice we cannot be perfect, we cannot get skill.
Okay sir, thank you. Next question is how to enhance our creativity. This is from Abru Hafiz.
See, skill already I told you skill is related with our body. So creativity is related with our mind and because of that we have to earn more knowledge. If we do not get knowledge, we cannot be creative, no doubt. We have to improve our imagination power also. Whatever we imagine based on our real life. In if in real life we do not get enough knowledge then it will be very difficult to develop our creativity.
Yes, very true. Thank you sir. Then third question is uh sir I read in Homo Sapiens. It's a book that human species is a result of this creativity. What is your thought on this? This question is from Aajim Khan.
Yeah, that is true. Uh actually whatever we do, whatever we practice that way we can develop. And that's why from the very beginning if we talk about animals, the way we are starting our journey we are making our life, we we are changing that way. Because all the animals, all the human, they can change themselves. So if we practice art that way we are changing ourselves and that's sure.
Sir, thank you sir. Then fourth question is, it's a long question. Uh the question is from Onusa Yadob. Uh she asked that tar is not art a form of life i- in itself. Then why the artists in India are are not given enough resources and limelight so that this talent can reach out to the future generations while face while they while facing back to to a bright history at the same time. It's a very relevant question I think. Yeah, please sir.
Uh I, yes, it is true. Uh in India almost all the artists they are having problem. Competitively waste. But it's not like that only in India. Nowadays almost in every places of the world they are facing. And it depends on actually development also. Now India is a developing country so slowly and slowly definitely we shall be developed and then this problem will not be there. And many artists they are very creative. Pure art, what we say pure art, painting, sculpture. And many artists are, they are commercial artists, what we say applied arts. Commercial artists they can easily absorb in many company and many other places. But pure artists, those who are very creative but whatever they like they should draw. So in India we do not have that kind of one market. We do not have many art dealer, we do not have many art galleries and facilities and all. Because of that actually all the artists are facing problem.
Thank you sir. Then last question, last and fifth question is uh it's a a very relevant question. Actually yesterday our new education poli- policy has been approved. It is related to that also. Uh sir, uh why does till now art and science are standing as a as on two platforms? Why are we not able to bring them together? This question is asked by Surja.
Uh pardon, Arten?
Yeah, why are we not able to bring them together? This is regarding art and science. I
Art and science, yes, yes, yes.
I repeat it, sir, why those still now art and science are standing as on two platforms? Why are we not able to bring them together?
Yeah, it is very interesting question. Uh already I told you uh that if we study both the subjects together then we can find how art and science both impact on each other. And nowadays we find different different, uh in N I D we find different courses, communication design, then architecture and in many places we need science. So definitely those who want to go to science, even they can practice art also. And many other artists, those who are not going for science, they are from humanity background. They also they can study art. So uh there should not be actually uh hardened fast rule that we cannot study both the things together. And now uh I do not know about this new education policy nicely but uh little bit I know and I am becoming very happy to know that now uh at least after many years government is bringing this kind of one policy and we hope if we practice both together then India will be very de- developed. Because in every work, in every invention, every discovery we need art, art- artistic imagination. That's sure.
Yeah, in a new education policy actually students can take science subject with art uh with art subject like art, music etcetera. So I think it will be implemented so so shortly. So the students will be benefited. Yeah, I think then then science and art will come in the same plen- platform.
Yes ma'am, definitely.
Yes. Thank you sir for your this uh you have elaborately placed these things in this forum. Now we are coming to conclude our session. I request Dr. Bissozid Sahar to offer vote of thanks. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Thank thank you madam for giving me opportunity to propose vote of thanks. Before proposing vote of thanks I like to tell you sir, our young researcher has prepare prepared a summary slide of your talk which is displayed here sir. Please have a look. Uh they have gone through your lecture and uh they are very much encouraged and inspired by your lecture and they have prepared this thing. Uh thank you. And uh thank you sir for giving such a nice talk on importance of art in life and discussing the history of art. Pandemic situation gives us ample time to discover our innate artistic character. It was a pleasure to listen you. We strongly believe all the participants are enlightened and highly motivated. Thank you very much for sparing your valuable time to ignite the young minds. We thank Professor G N Sasti, Director C S R N I S T for all valuable guidance and mentorship. We also sincerely acknowledge the whole S R T P team for the successfully conducting this session. Thank you all for participating and attending this session.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.